Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Marcy, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Gelderlos, Maryka, Norca, Steenstra, Truus, Vanderwaal, and Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Brandon Hahn from Ivan Rest Church. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to follow that. And in conclusion, applause for the meeting.
Let's come to the Lord. Lord God, we thank you this evening for this day, for the many gifts that you've given us in it, as you do each day. One of the gifts that you give us are homes and communities in which we live. And so as we go about the business of our town this evening, we just pray that you'll bless our time together, give us wisdom and discernment, and bless our deliberations as well. Pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for being with us tonight. I absolutely appreciate it. Yeah, before you adjourn for tonight's meeting, is there a motion to approve that agenda? So, motion?
Support.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposition, please say no. Do you have the minutes from our last meeting, May 12? Had a chance to look at those. So is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Move.
Support.
And support. Any additions, corrections, anything like that? If not, all those in favor of approving minutes, please say yes. Yes. Opposition, please say no. Presentation of bills tonight. About $420,000. Griffin, anything you'd like to point out before we open it up for question on any of the bills?
Yes, please. Thank you. Good to see everyone this evening. We do have a check register of just over $420,000. Of the pre-written checks, in the amount of $105,000 and some change, just going to highlight those are primarily utility bills. If you saw those, primarily are consumers and our water bills. Getting into the regular checks, just a few to highlight for the group. First is an invoice for brick plumbing in the amount of $24,231. Most of that was to install the fire suppression line that we discussed several meetings ago at 3050 Ivan Rest. That was approved on the April 14 meeting. That has now been installed, and I think I included a picture in my memo of a meeting or so ago, that we didn't end up needing to cut all the way into the driving lane. They were able to keep the cut, I'm going to call it, in the bike lane. So we're hoping that will have minimal impacts moving forward, and they did a really nice job. So happy to get that done quickly. Following, we have an invoice in the amount of $15,000, $47 to Core Technology Corporation. This is the annual service contract payment for the police department's record management system. One of their applications that that serves is to access a lean, which is one of the important information gathering tools that the police department uses. We have courtesy Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram in the amount of $7,633, as well as Vanach Auto Body in the amount of $5,410. These are both for vehicle repairs. The motor pool has been taken care of. We have a combination of several different invoices totaling the amount of $46,692 to Moren Brew Jink. This is miscellaneous ongoing projects, but almost $37,000 of that is in regard to the project management associated with the 31st and Wallace ongoing water main replacement projects. The last invoice I'd like to highlight this evening is ShareCo Communications in the amount of $30,246. This is the installation of fiber infrastructure between multiple of the municipal buildings for wireless access points. This is the first step of that fiscal security upgrade project that we talked about several months ago. At this point, there was some money included in the ongoing fiscal year budget to get that started. That ShareCo infrastructure piece is really what that Phase 1 is going to be. And then next, after that, we will begin the installation of the new door access management system. So that's the first piece there, and think about it really as the behind-the-scenes part so we can get working on the other pieces. Those are the invoices I have to highlight this evening, but as normal, I am happy to answer any other questions you all may have.
Thank you. Questions for Griffin on any invoices? Okay. Now, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $420,782.53?
Move to approve.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Other final comments? Questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maryka, Norca, Steenstra, Truus, Vanderwaal, Gelderlos, and Mayor Mas.
Yes. Well, it's time for my favorite time of every meeting, and that is public comment. When we just finished with 21 groups of second graders, and they come in and see City Hall, and they go to the fire department, the police department, and I tell them that is my favorite time of the meeting, is public comment, and they... So anybody who'd like to address the council, please come up to the podium and give us your name, address. Carla, we know you. Welcome. And tell us what you're thinking about tonight for reporting this time.
I just wanted to thank everyone for approving that grant so that we could go ahead with the community forest event. We had 30-some people show up, and we accomplished a lot of work. My head was kind of spinning because everybody was asking me questions, what should we do next? And that was a great feeling. We had a really nice meal. Steve brought us chili, and we also had fajitas from Gonzalez's, and then we got one of the three malt cakes, and I don't know how to pronounce it, but it was really good, and it went really fast. But people seemed to really enjoy it. Footmore Farms brought plants, and we did a drawing for different types of plants. Some of the blueberry bushes were this big, and it was really nice. And they had blueberries on them and everything, so people seemed to be really pleased with what was happening, and we had a really fun night. So I just want to thank you again. Also, Anthony Meyer from Ascend Tree Services brought observation beehive, and he's like, can we put one on this lot? Can we put bees in the city? And he was, he's a very, very pleasant person to work with, and he's been very helpful with the lot. So I just wanted to thank you because you guys made it possible for us to have a great event.
Well, thank you for all your work on it. I know we sent out, I think to the neighbors, anybody who drove past, drives past the lot every day, got an invitation. So we sent out about 100 of them.
Some of the neighbors actually stopped, you know, like even later, where they'd come back from something, and, you know, they weren't there to eat or to perform the work, but they came to see what was going on. So we had quite a few neighbors just drop by.
And Carla enters, I want the council to know that Carla, in her social media post, has talked a little bit about the grant program thanks to the City of Granville. There's says, there's many grants available, and so thanks for acknowledging that. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Anybody else like to address the council? Martha? Welcome.
Thank you.
Can you tell us what's going on with Buck Creek? Or whatever.
I have all kinds of things to share with you. Since we don't have a presentation tonight, I thought I'd talk a lot. No, I'm just kidding. Martha Vermeulen, 4263, Indian Spring, and good old Granville. Thank you for this opportunity. I just feel so privileged to be a citizen in this community where we have an opportunity to share. Thank you. This is basically a shout-out to all our city government workers and also the environmental groups that you support. I suspect you've heard the saying, you don't know what you don't know. And that's what I want to talk about, because I don't know a lot still, and when I came to Granville, I knew even less. But the good news is, I'm learning. I'm learning more. Here's an example. Carla just got up and spoke about Granville City Tree Project. I now know that stubs on trees and volcanoes, when you plant, are not good. I didn't know that before I took the classes that taught me how to prune trees and plant, and I've had the opportunity actually to plant trees. So I'm in debt to that. Being involved with friends of Buck Creek, before I started that, I'd look into the creek and think, whoa, this creek looks really good. Water looks clean and clear. But I didn't know that there were things like E. coli and salt, warming waters, other pollutants. Of course, I could see the trash, which brings me to an invitation to, our board met the other day, and we have set a date for the annual cleanup, and I will be giving you more information about this as well. But it will be Saturday, August 16th, from 9:00 to noon. We'll start most likely at Lumery Park in Wyoming, like we always do. And I so appreciate the many of you who have participated in this event before. You know that it's pretty cool to be cleaning along the creek and see a great blue heron fly by, or maybe a white-tailed deer. You never know what you're going to see out there. But besides enjoying the creek and cleaning it up, because there's an awful lot of trash out there still, you get a chance to meet some really wonderful people, have a lot of fun, and I hope you all can join us. And if not, thank you for your support. Oh, and you can choose your level of involvement. You can get out there with big boots and pull out things like, we pulled out dishwashers before, and big tubs of who-knows-what. But, or you can just stay in nice areas. There's always litter to clean up, unfortunately. Oh, and most importantly, Mayor Steve will be providing a delicious lunch for all volunteers once again, as he has for many years, and we appreciate that so much. Thank you. The Granville Environmental Sustainability Committee, known as the ESC, has also raised my awareness about a lot of things I didn't know. Helping with the rain garden over at, which now Oakstown Intermediate School, taught me the value of native plants, which I was pretty oblivious about earlier. But lately, I have discovered more about the plants that aren't native, which we call invasive. And I want to thank the city for their support in involving, including that in your parks plan, as well as in your funding. These plants, I always, you know, you walk by and you say, boy, those look kind of nice. Those are pretty, they're pretty yellow flowers. I never realized they actually affect water quality. They can reduce oxygen levels, crowd out valuable native plants, and this is, this really was interesting, I thought, and kind of scary. They can actually release toxins into the soil to prevent other plants from taking hold there. So I've been learning a lot about that, and I had no idea. So again, I want to thank our city government, all of you, you're all all over the place here, for all you do and supporting that. I do have some news on some upcoming events, starting with tomorrow. There is going to be a salmon release at Wedgewood Park at 10 o'clock. So the schools, Schools for Salmon, I think it's called, Elgro, Matt Bain is going to be there. He knows so much about the creek. He's really interesting to talk with. But it's fun to watch the kids releasing their little salmon, being released, and they're about that big, and most of them have names as they release them, you know? Goodbye, Marvin. Good luck. But isn't that wonderful that we have a creek, at least this section of it? Not all 20 miles could we do this, but our part of the creek, we can do cool things like that with our students. I'm very excited. I'll be there, unless it's pouring rain, but I'll probably be there anyway. You've also heard, I know Mitch has talked about it, the upcoming Eco Native Plant Fest that we're having, or sale, 9:00 to noon at the Commons, which is a beautiful place to have something like that. And it's a great way, I learned more about alpacas last year at this. It's just not, it's just not a bunch of plants for sale. There's a lot of really interesting people. Got some clover that I planted in a spot that doesn't want to grow anything, and the clover's coming up. So I hope you can join us, at least for a little bit, 9:00 to noon, the last Saturday of the month. And that's sponsored by our Environmental Sustainability Committee, which you all support and JR is part of. And let's see, is there anything else? I told you about the cleanup, told you about the salmon release. I think that's all I'm going to talk about right now, but I'd love to see all of you. You are valuable to so many people in this community. I can't thank you enough for all you do and your support. So now you know that it's still a lot I don't know. Thank you for sharing and my opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Martha. Thanks for everything that you do and your passion for Buck Creek and shepherding the whole kinds of Buck Creek.
I'm still, I'm still, I'm not doing as much as I used to. I'm trying to pass the baton on to younger and hopefully more enthusiastic people, but I haven't come and talked to city council in a while. There's so many good things coming, going on, and I just wanted to thank you.
Appreciate it, though. Thanks, Martha. Anybody else like to address the council? Chance? Okay. Next item, under ordinances and resolutions. First proposed resolution is number 3371, the water sewer rates and water sewer ready-to-serv charges. Griffin, anything you or Jane, we've talked about it a lot, anything else you want to add on?
I'll just summarize again that, you know, in December of this last year, the city council hired a consultant to perform a rate study for the municipal water system. We discussed a few different scenarios during budget workshop number two, and ultimately are recommending the rate changes that are brought before you all this evening. They are significant, but we also feel like they will continue to sustain our system, allow us to cover the costs associated with necessary upcoming local infrastructure projects, as well as the costs that will be incurred by our organization and our community based on the changes to the City of Wyoming's funding structure and capital projects, and probably most importantly, continue to keep Granville's utility rates as some of the most competitive in the region. But I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I agree with you. I think we've discussed this quite a bit, and this would be the formal action to adopt these increased charges. I probably will note, if it's not already known, that they would be to take effect beginning with the July, so the beginning of our new fiscal year, the July 2025 utility bills.
Questions for Griffin on the water and sewer rates? If not, is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3371, the Resolution Amending Rules and Regulations Governing the Use and Supply of Water and Sewer effective July 1, 2025?
Support.
And support. Any questions? No. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Norca, Steenstra, Truus, Vanderwaal, Gelderlos, Maryka, and Mayor Mas.
Yes. See, next item is Proposed Resolution 3372 Regarding Fee Schedules and Escrow Policy. Matt had gone over this last week. Matt, anything else you'd like to add to that or updates on it?
One thing included in your packet for this meeting was a redlined version of the entire fee packet. Again, over the last several months, the presidents have spent a lot of time to go over these fees, making sure what we're proposing is within the market and is reasonable, and is not going to price anybody out of any type of application. The escrow policy is important going forward, particularly when you look at planning commission and zoning board applications. The fees we pay for legal engineering, professional planning reviews, those are considerable costs. And we just want to make sure our taxpayers are not offsetting those costs. The applicants are offsetting those costs. So if you have to answer any questions you may have.
And Mr. Mayor, I just, I really appreciate council's consideration of the escrow policy. You know, this is a practice that, you know, has been used from time to time in the past by the City of Granville, but having a policy like this and making it a more standard practice, I feel strongly it's a step in the right direction for our organization in terms of, you know, appropriately passing along the costs associated with development, the costs associated with redevelopment, the costs associated with the consideration of various tax abatements. So I think considering a escrow policy in package with our rate schedule is a good step forward for our organization.
Thanks for all your work on that, Matt.
Happy to help.
And especially happy to see, and like Griffin said, anything development-related would be unfair for our taxpayers to have those bills entirely. So this is equitable and right, and probably expected on their part, so nobody's going to be surprised.
Correct.
Okay. What we have, of course, Proposed Resolution 3372. It's a resolution to approve an updated fee schedule and escrow policy for community development-related services. Is there a motion to?
Actually, there is a question.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Sure. Absolutely.
Yeah, so to everybody, thank you for updating these, especially the ones from 1987. Those are, those caught my eye. My first question is about the special event, the non-city affiliated fee. I'm going to assume that non-city affiliated means the city affiliated things are things like the people we've heard from today, ESC, Tree Board, DVA, Fourth of July. Are those all considered city affiliated?
They are.
DVA, Fourth of July, all that stuff.
Correct. Non-affiliated would be nonprofit, doing a 5K or something like that, you see those throughout the year, and if there are real costs associated with those.
Agreed. I think those application fees are fair. I'm not in favor of them asking to appeal those fees. I think those fees should be passed along. I'm pretty sure the Riverbank Run doesn't get their fees waived to them by City of Granville Act. I'm sure that's part of their registration fees or whatever it is. So I love that the city can absorb some of the city affiliated events, but I'm not sure that I support the ability for the applicant to appeal to us, or even partial really for that. So I might be on an island here, but I just think if we're going to change these fees, they should be passed along to the applicant.
Who hears those appeals? Is that you, Matt?
Well, the way it's drafted, they would appeal to the city.
So where that comes from, and I guess I can, I can share from, you know, my experiences, you know, there are going to be some organizations, and I won't name specifics, I guess, that, you know, they're going to push back on these. And, you know, I'm happy, I'm happy to hear those. I think quite often, you know, these organizations like that there's a chance for them to come before a public body and make this argument of the public benefit and all this, all this good stuff these events do, and they really, they really do. So, you know, I think we're happy to take that out for now, and we can see how it goes after a year, and I guess if we feel like we're getting a large number of those, or we can always try it for a year, and if we want to reevaluate, we can do that as well. It definitely gives us a stronger piece to stand on if we're going, you know, nope, this is what the fee schedule says, this is how we're going to handle it. I think what you're potentially going to hear is some arguments from some of these groups about whether or not the cost is truly associated with their event or not. And again, I don't, it's easy for me to sit up here and say, you know, the intent of this, none of these events are money makers, you know, for the city. You know, we're doing the best we can to try to cover our costs. That obviously has implications on some of these events, because those are now going to be costs borne by them that they maybe haven't traditionally had to carry, and that means those are tough decisions that they're going to have to make too. So I really appreciate what you're saying, and I think that's absolutely the intent. I think it's we just, we want to think through, you know, is there any relief? Is there any conversation that we want to have about some of them? And maybe we start with no, and we can always reevaluate from there.
Yeah. Just my opinion, that's all.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Other thoughts on that particular part of the proposed fee schedule?
I second the motion to strike.
Okay. So Derek, you made a motion to approve.
I guess there was a motion, yeah.
And seconded by, yeah. You know, if somebody really feels really strongly, they can still come and talk to the council.
I'm fine with that.
Because there might be some organization we don't even know about, and you think, this is the most awesome thing ever, but it does kind of put the council in a spot of evaluating different nonprofits.
I mean, if we have three pages worth of adjustments, I guess I want to be cautious on this one, just so we don't lose a bunch of money on appeals per se.
We have motion and support. Any other discussion to touch?
I don't necessarily have strong feelings either way, but if we were to leave it in that there was an opportunity for appeal, at whatever time we would end up receiving such a deal, I think we would want to talk about some criteria to be able to evaluate those requests so that we can have some fairness, or, you know, some questions to ask, or something to kind of evaluate any request against.
Of course, by just striking it, as for Derek suggesting it takes all this productivity out of itself, that's kind of one benefit of it, I suppose. Yeah?
Just either way, if we do leave it in, we want to have some kind of, you know, specific criteria to evaluate.
Which would probably be something to great point if we decide to take it, because...
And I do want to highlight, if I can, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I think something that's important to note too is, you know, when it comes to, let's think about DVA events, let's talk about Fourth of July. I think that's a great example. Because it's a city-sponsored event, we're already covering all those costs anyway. You know, that's part of the challenge of Fourth of July, for example, is it's already making all the payments, because it's an internal organization, we have to make sure those are all covered. The DEA is the same way. The DEA is already paying all of the costs associated with hosting these events. I mean, there is a real argument that by putting this policy in place, we're putting these external events on the same playing field as our internal events.
I guess my point is that if it's not listed that you can appeal, it doesn't mean that you can't appeal. It just means that they're not giving the language that you can, right? So if I'm hosting a race to cross turtles across Wilson, and I'm like, do we really need cops for all this traffic stop? It doesn't mean I can't appeal, it just means maybe I should ask. Ask the question before you're told no.
Makes sense. Motion and support? Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truus.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maryka.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Mayor Mas.
Yes. Okay. That's Resolution 3372. Next item is the Resolution Regarding Truth and Taxation. Charlie, anything you want to say?
You know, there's a memo there in your packet, brought to you just to explain the three different scenarios the city council had requested at their last meeting. I think it lays everything out well, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add a little context to that, if it's helpful. This is probably the best place for the council to have any follow-up discussion to the thorough conversation we had last Monday about setting the millage rate for this upcoming fiscal year. In follow-up to that conversation, you know, one of the, well, the, really the action you all will have to consider in terms of setting the millage rate comes down to this truth and taxation resolution. So that's why I asked Charlie, based on all of the direction you all provided at the last meeting, to provide three different options. You know, option one being to maintain the millage rate at 12.55, and what steps would have to occur for that. Option two would be to reduce the millage rate by .25, and what the resolution would look like in that respect. And then finally, if you all would like to reduce the millage rate by .5 mils, what that would look like. I also want to use this opportunity to highlight the additional materials that were provided in the packet and follow-up to that conversation. in the packet and follow-up to that conversation. So hopefully you all had a chance to review not only the truth and taxation options, but the various fund balance projections that were provided based on those corresponding three scenarios. Also included, the PESR rating summary reports, and this last year's map, and an updated roadmap that clarifies the bridge rehabilitations as opposed to replacements that I think unfortunately caused some confusion. So, those materials are also included in your packet. I don't plan on, I guess, rehashing the conversation we had, but I'll leave it there that we did our best to provide the materials you all were looking for, and staff will be happy to do the best we can to answer any questions about those. But this really would be the time where any discussion would need to take place about the millage rate prior to the adoption of the truth and taxation resolution.
I've got, I'll open it up, and before we open it up to all of us for questions or comments, Jane, I've got a question for you. So, you've laid out three different scenarios, what happens to fund balance. Leave the millage rate alone, reduce by point two-five, reduce by point five. So I just wanna make sure I understand this. Last meeting, I believe you said that average value, taxable value at the SEB is about two-hundred and, just north of two-hundred dollars.
Well, the average taxable value is a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Hundred and five. So, is my math correct that a point five millage reduction would be like fifty-two dollars or something like that?
It's actually, yeah, it's about fifty dollars.
Okay, and then the point two-five would be about a twenty-five dollar, really? Okay. That was one thing, just wanna make sure my math was right on that. So, it's some relief, but, yeah, twenty-five, fifty dollars for the average. Second question is, we're gonna, we're looking at a lot of projects, and I see the road list, and lots of good things, lots of infrastructure, lots of expensive projects. We're gonna be bonding for that probably. So, when a bonding company, rating company, takes a look at our finances, how big of a factor, is it a factor that they look at our fund balance, they look at our millage rate? How does that impact the rating agency?
They do take fund balance into consideration. They don't talk a lot about projecting forward, but they also take into consideration your willingness to fund yourself. So, a reduction in millage may be a red flag for a rating agency. I cannot say that it will be or won't be, but the tendency is, if you are willing to reduce your millage, but you're asking someone to loan you money, it's just a little bit of a caution, and I don't know how much it would affect the rating, but I do know they do take that into consideration.
To balance that one, I think, you know, fund balance is something a rating agency's gonna look at. Something that's always weathered really good for the city of Granville is the fact that we don't capture our full charter millage rate. So, you know, there's a lot of these items that, at the end of the day, kind of all go into their decision-making process. And as you all know, Granville traditionally has rated quite well.
I've read the summary, it's usually like a two, three-page, and it's always really interesting. I always learn things about the city and what they are looking at, and what they find interesting, so, thanks for that information. Other thoughts?
Tell them.
So Jane, with a reduction in the millage, it looks like this current fiscal year, we'd make it, and people would save twenty, fifty bucks on their taxes. But what we talked about when we budgeted with Ken a year ago, and what we talked about when we budgeted this year, was looking ahead to two years out, three years out, and I look at all the red lines on the roads. If we were to cut the millage this year, we'd be coming back here next year and raising it in all likelihood, right?
There's a high likelihood, yes, we would be back here asking you to either reinstate the millage that you had cut, or to even raise it further.
Do you have a motion?
Certainly.
Or do we want to do more?
No, we'll still have discussion.
I'd like to, that we stick with the original budget that we had proposed as last week.
Is motion and support?
Support.
Motion and support. Okay. Other comments, thoughts? Justin?
This will come as no surprise. I would prefer that we move forward with option two. I can speak on behalf of someone whose home is uncapped, so I know we're talking about the average rate, but when we're talking about the exchange of property, the selling of property, the uncapping of homes, it is a much more significant burden on taxpayers than someone who's lived in their home for twenty years and has maintained, you know, a relatively low increase in taxable value. So, I think that when we talk about affordable housing, the attraction of people to our community, that has to factor in, because when you uncapped a home, that is a substantial burden. I know it because I pay it, and I know other people do too. I also recognize that our taxes fund a lot of wonderful services. I'm thankful for Jane for all of the work on this, to Charlie for all of the work on making the three options, so sorry for that last minute, I'm requested, but I provided good information here. And I'm just gonna speak for a few minutes on this. The truth is that regardless of what we do tonight, if you look at the projections, by twenty-six, twenty-seven, or twenty-seven, twenty-eight fiscal year, the fund balance is not going to be adequate to support this road plan. It's not going to be adequate to support the capital improvements that we're hoping to make. And Griffin has brought this point up before, that the fund balance, we are pulling from the fund balance at a faster rate than is sustainable. Fair enough, right? Okay. So, I don't think that just looking at, in isolation, the fund balance, that that's adequate. To me, tonight's vote is more about, more than just this fiscal year's budget. It's more of a philosophical question. What is the approach we're gonna take as a council to that reality, that you cannot rely on the fund balance year by year by year unless you're willing to do one of three things? The first would be to stay the course, stick to this plan exactly as it was written, kick the can down the road, and then when that reality smacks the council in the face that there's not enough money in the, in the fund balance, to raise taxes drastically, cut spending drastically. That's one option. Or, we can say, we can recognize that, long-term, this is not a solution, this is, you know, what we would really hope for, but we do not have the funds to make this happen. And so we really need to give more thoughtful consideration to this road plan, to our capital improvement plan, and not kick the can down the road, and recognize that adjustments are gonna have to be made. We do not have to raise our millage rate, that is not the only option. We can reprioritize what is being done. So I would disagree with the comment that we, if we did this, we must come back next year and raise the millage rate. I don't think that that is true. It's a false choice to me to say we either commit to the roads, or we maintain this tax rate, or increase this tax rate. The fact is, we've already deviated from this plan, we've already seen numbers come in at a higher rate, we've already seen rehab in place of replacements, so there's been changes. And while that number may seem insignificant, the millage rate, it's only gonna save taxpayers fifty dollars, or seventy-five, or whatever it might be, that is in conjunction with all the other added increases on people's cost of living. We have inflation, we have more than just this taxing body that is taxing people who live in this community, and all other communities. So I think it's a philosophical question of, are we able to provide relief to people when we know that an increase is coming, and we know that our original plan, if we are honest with ourselves, is not sustainable? And so when I look at this year's budget, I think we can absorb a point two-five millage decrease. The bigger question is a question for a council that, like I said before, will not include me, but you're going to have to give greater thought, because as it stands, unless you are willing to adopt a significant tax increase, if we're committing to that tonight, and by voting to approve this, in my mind, that's what's happening, we're saying we're sticking with this plan, and a bigger tax increase is coming in the future. Or, let's reprioritize, let's look at this, let's next year approach the budget cycle where we're already asking for various options, and we're already asking for full facts to be examined, and then we can determine what the plan is from there. So, the question to me is, who's the gatekeeper of the vision of the roads in the city? It falls on all of us. We are the gatekeepers of that. We would be lying if we said, this is our plan, and we're sticking to it, there is no way that that is going to happen. And I won't be in this chair in a few years, but I will still be in the city, I hope, and I can come and remind, you know, this is what was committed to, what is the plan now? And so to me, let's give people a little bit of relief to show that we recognize that people are stretched thin, we recognize that we have deranged water and sewer rates, but we're gonna provide you with a little relief while we look at a more long-term sustainable solution for our roads and all of the other expenditures that come with it. So, with that, I will stop my remarks on this. I may be a minority, I don't know, and I'm okay with that, but I do think that it necessitates us giving pause to the bigger picture here.
Thank you. Other comments, thoughts?
I'll just touch on the PESR report a bit, which is a service to us, but it's, over the years, I don't know if it's always extremely accurate or not, I'm not sure it's any more accurate than what it used to be done. I remember Jim Buck calling us that. More of a burgeoning, hired, engineering students that were doing internships, and had them ride on the back of a pickup truck and drive around to take notes on the road conditions many, many years ago. But, with that said, and I hope any of you took advantage of the map and went out and looked at some of our road conditions. We've got this two thousand twenty-four PESR rating. There are areas that are showing up as red that have already been repaved, that are done, that should be green. There are numerous streets that are showing as red that are in our twenty-four, twenty-five budget that are beginning going out to be repaired soon. And I've always been an advocate for the roads, I'm very concerned about our bridge out there over the interstate on Forty-Fourth Street, and some of our main roads. I drove a lot of these roads that are red, that have not already been repaired, which is, you know, a handful of them, not all of them certainly. But my concern is, how do they quantify that these roads are red? You know, de-impantation, potholes, cracking. And there's a difference between taking Prairie, or Fortieth, or Canal, a main road that has stress cracks or some conditions with it, than taking a side street that maybe has twelve homes on it, and some puddles that are patched. A lot of these side streets, yes, we could do that, but there is a lot of life left in a lot of these smarter roads that are just residential neighborhoods. Certainly, there are some that need to be repaired. In retrospect, I think, going back, I remember it was last year or two years ago, when we adjusted our millage rate, I think we were all rather fearful of looking at four bridge replacements or major funding, especially still given the uncertainty that we don't have a commitment for them on the bridge over the expressway and other things. I still feel that a lot of that is given out responsibility, that that is not a steep road to be determined. But with that said, I guess in regards, my comments to these PESR ratings are, it looks pretty scary looking at this piece of paper, but a lot of our roads are in better shape than what this would indicate, and some of them have already been repaired, and so they will be repaired soon.
And not all those roads are in our five-year plan either. Not all those red roads.
I can't answer that, I did look through our...
No, I did check that, they're not all in there.
You know, and it's hard, and I don't know how, do they just assess a road like Prairie, you know, number of cracks per square foot, that's the same as they would Higgins' side street where there's way less traffic? I don't know that. But I do know that a lot of our side streets that are red out here will, they're not failing. They're far from failing. Yes, some of them will need to be repaved.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna piggyback on the PESR ratings too, right? So if you split ten rating points, three ways, right? One category is gonna have forty percent of the numbers. So if you gave forty percent of the numbers to fair, would we have a lot more yellow than red out here? Probably. If you split that and gave forty percent to good, would we have a lot more green out here? Probably. Right? When I drive down these roads on my half-ton truck, most of them are not a problem. When I ride down, on them on my twenty-five-millimeter road bike tires, a lot of them are a problem. And even my size fourteen-foot, when I'm running down these roads, a lot of them are still a problem. I just don't think that we're in as dire a situation as what these ratings are showing. I'm, I don't work for PESR, I don't work for the roads, I don't work, I'm not an expert, but I've been down most of these roads more than ten times. Just don't think we're in that spot. I really appreciate Tim's comments, I really appreciate Justin's comments. I don't know what the answer is here, but I know that we're, we're the gatekeepers of what's next, and I think that is important for us to reflect on. So, I care about saving myself money, I care about saving my neighbors' money, whether you're capped or uncapped, those are important things, and so that's why I think that we're here revisiting that. And I wanna just note that I'm happy we are, whether we agree or disagree, I'm glad that we're talking about it.
Any other comments or thoughts about PESR ratings are kind of connected with millage rates as well? Let's make one observation, so, you guys are probably sick of hearing how many years I've been on the council, but it's twenty-seven years. And there's very few decisions that I've, usually the night of a council meeting, if there's something, I'll think about it, but very few decisions I second-guess long time later, because it's, you know, decisions made, we move on. But one of the decisions that I, there's been a couple that I still regret, and one of those was done quite a while ago, where I was a big advocate and helped push through a millage reduction in the city of Granville. And I don't know if, Randy, if you were on the council then or not, but, so we made that, we made that adjustment, and I don't remember what it was, but it didn't seem to have, I mean, I understand exactly what Justin said, I mean, I get it, I understand, and I know your comments are thoughtful, and I appreciate it. We made the millage adjustment, and, you know, there wasn't an outpouring of gratitude or acknowledgement, or even maybe awareness, but we did that, and I thought it was right, because philosophically, I thought we should not be taking money, we had very robust fund balances at the time, and I thought it's not right that we are taking money ahead of when we need it. Let's adjust the fund, the millage rate frequently, as needed. Well, I don't, I don't know what year that was, Jane, if you, I don't know if you know it right offhand.
Two thousand and twelve or thirteen.
But, there was maybe a downturn in housing prices, or taxable value, or whatever. But there were times that we, during our budget meetings, had discussions, serious discussions, saying, you know what, I mean, we got so close that we were, financially, that we were talking about stopping irrigating public spaces, like the parks, the road medians. That wasn't fun, Josh, I don't know what, you remember that?
Yeah, that was like two thousand and nine.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I mean, that would be about the, yeah, right time.
Eighty-nine, it was about...
Not, not fun. And, you know, we know that we are not lavish in our spending, I don't think. And I think that our citizens deserve and expect and plan on a certain level of service. And at the time, we said, you know, one of them is not, that we're gonna stop, stop irrigating the parks, and we're just gonna let it die, because we can save three thousand dollars. Those were the items that we were looking at. And so I'm just a little cautious of ever getting in that position again. And again, we weren't in trouble, it just was not a lot of fun, budget times. So, anyway, that's, that's what, so, any other comments? Randy?
I'm just gonna throw another comment out there, a little bit of humor, I hope you find it in there. So, with the credit show at the interstate, Forty-Fourth Street, the road people are most concerned about the PESR ratings, has it in fair condition, so, you know, go... are most concerned about the Pacer ratings has it in fair condition, so, you know, go figure. We wasted a lot of time talking about that out there.
Any other comments or questions?
Do we have one motion or two motions?
So the first, yeah. David, if you want to help me out here?
Councilmember Steenstra made a motion, and that was to approve, I understood it, option one of Resolution thirty-three seventy-three.
Correct.
That was accepted. And then was there another motion after that?
No, that was, so thirty-three seventy-three is the truth in taxation.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so, yeah, okay. So the motion is to continue delivering, letting operating millage to twelve point five five zero.
Yeah, I think that's a confusion may come from, and Justin had it me to speak for you, so if I'm wrong, please correct me, but I think Justin mentioned he preferred option two, but I don't think we got a formal motion other than Tim's.
So we've got the formal motion on option one for Resolution thirty-three seventy-four. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Truist?
Yes.
Janerow?
Yes.
Gonderlos?
No.
Meringa?
Yes.
Norcuk?
No.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mirmas?
Yes. Great, thank you, thanks for good discussion. Next item is adopting the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, and that's Resolution number thirty-three seventy-four. Before we open it up, the comments and questions, is there a motion to approve? And that would have that millage rate inserted in for there at twelve point...
Please, yes, because we didn't know how, where the council would ultimately go on truth in taxation, when you're considering adoption of the budget, Resolution would ask that you all would state the millage rate, so that can be incorporated into the blank spot in Resolution seventy, or, excuse me, Resolution thirty-three seventy-four.
So a motion to approve Resolution number thirty-three seventy-four, so Resolution adopt the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty point six, and, yeah, with the appropriate number on it.
I make that motion with the millage set at twelve point five five, is that the right number?
Yeah, thanks.
Support.
Motion support. Discussion, any comments anybody wants to make about the budget? We've said it a number of times, but thank you all, department heads, Jane, everybody who's involved, smooth process. I always learn a lot, it's always good. You know, I've heard it said before, if you want to know a person's priorities, take a look at their checkbook, take a look at their budget. These are the things that we find important to our citizens, and I'm very proud of this budget, so, thank you. Got a motion support, any other comments?
Just a comment, I guess I could have spoke a little bit earlier, but I just want to say I appreciate Justin's diligence and looking at the numbers and bringing forward, you know, your thoughts on, you know, kind of how we plan going forward and so forth. I really came in here kind of not knowing exactly which way to go on this. I do feel like, you know, we've kind of put this five-year plan together and we need a little bit more time to kind of evaluate where we're going to be with things, which is why I voted for the kind of state of course at this point, but I think Justin's points are really well-taken, like we need to be looking seriously at this stuff year by year, and I know we do during the budget, but as we look at those fund balances, we start to see the things creeping up, and I know all of its best guess of, you know, what information we have available at the time and all of that kind of stuff, but I think his point is really well-taken, that we need to, you know, seriously consider where we're at year by year, and if we do end up paying really good prices on roads over the next couple of years, we're able to move some things up and that sort of thing, I think we could have a serious conversation again in a year or two about adjusting the millage rate, so I hope people would bring me over to that. Thank you for bringing forward the question.
Any other comments?
Question?
Yeah, Randy?
And somewhat on the same line of thinking, on our twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we have a lot of roads, small roads, Genesee, Lombard, McIntyre, by the way, various roads, local roads that have been budgeted, but in my correct, none of the money has been appropriated for those yet, in the sense that we could look at the condition of those roads again before we go to bed or have we gone to bed?
The overlay projects, which my understanding is those roads are included, was approved a month or so ago. That was the black gold, almost million-dollar contract that was awarded. That's my understanding is those projects are all included and currently underway, or that that contract's currently underway.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Got a motion support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Janerow?
Yes.
Gonderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Norcuk?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
And Mirmas?
Yes. Thank you. So we've got, under the consent agenda, we do have a, approval would be in the best interest of the city because we do have a purchase in there, so we have three reports, April reports from EMS Fire and the council report, and the historical commission minutes, as well as the planning commission May minutes, and the purchase order, there's a memo in here about N-Car radar units, and a motion was made at the planning commission to recommend Ray Shabler and Matt Lawson reappoint due terms to the planning commission expiring at the end of May, or June of twenty twenty-eight, so that's also in the consent agenda. So approval would be, again, in the best interest of the city. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So support.
Motion support. Anything, anybody, any of those items anybody would like to talk about or questions or...
Happy to see the planning commission have folks willing to serve again on terms. We have a great, great board, especially with so many great things happening in the city, we have a lot of various positions and expertise, so these are two good posts.
And you've got a great chair, too.
We have a great chair.
I'd like to give a shout-out to Deputy Chief Freeman, he prepared the memo for you all for the purchase request of the radar units, and I think it's the first one that he has prepared for you all in his role as deputy chief, so just give a shout-out to him. I know he's been learning a lot over the last couple of months in his new role.
Any other comments, questions? Not, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gonderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Norcuk?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Janerow?
Yes.
And Mirmas?
Yes. Griffin, city managers' report.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have any items for action for you all this evening, wanted to try to keep this meeting as focused on the various budget actions as possible, but I would like to take just a minute to highlight a couple of the project update items that I think are particularly noteworthy this evening. First off, I'm really excited to share that we have finally received our permit from Eagle for the Mill Race Park project. I know that has been a long time coming, and there's been a few hiccups even during my short time here in terms of some of the feedback we've received from Eagle, but we do have that. We are actively working to go out to bid for that project. I believe we'll be putting the bid out on the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh of this month still. It is still our hope that we can secure a contractor to begin that project this construction season. We will obviously be bringing those bids before you all once we receive those, but we are full steam ahead on the Mill Race Park project. Relatedly, an RFP was put out late last week by Downtown Grand Rapids Inc. in partnership with Kent County Parks to find a contractor or a vendor to conduct a feasibility study about the potential to transition Indian Mountains Drive to a non-motorized trail. That study will be funded by Downtown Grand Rapids Inc., so you all will not want to see a purchase request or an authorization request for that, but that's another one to please be aware that there will hopefully be some movement in the next few months. There seems to be quite a bit of consensus that that would be a good thing for that road, so I'm looking forward to that moving forward. We had a very thorough conversation or a restorative conference facilitated by the Dispute Resolution Center of West Michigan last week. Several council members, several members of staff participated in a three-to-four-hour meeting with some representatives from the surrounding neighborhood as well as the Grandville Little League, and I put a copy of the agreement that was reached on the table for all of you all when you got here. There are some really exciting items that we'll be continuing to explore that can hopefully, that hopefully may be able to be implemented to bring the temperature down in that relationship and hopefully create a more successful future kind of for everyone involved in that. It is far from over, there's many items we still kind of have to explore in terms of feasibility of some of those options, but that process has progressed nicely. The fire station plaque that has all of your names on it was installed late last week. We had a little bit of a hiccup with that vendor, and had to get some corrections made, but the plaque has been installed. Now that that's installed, I am going to be looking to work with the fire department to host you all for a tour of that facility, either before or after an upcoming council meeting, so in June or July, when the weather's nice, please keep an eye out for that. I'll probably be reaching out to try to find a good time. Hopefully, if we can have a short agenda, we can just go all over as a group after a meeting and do a quick walkthrough, just so you all can see the fixes that have been made. And then lastly, just want to share for the community that we obviously had a pretty significant storm late last week, recognizing that we were very fortunate here in Grandville compared to some other communities, but nevertheless, if you all have downed limbs or excess kind of woody debris, storm debris, please feel free and bring that to the Department of Public Works. If you reach out to DPW during normal business hours, they'd be happy to open the back for you, and they've got a pile started already. So if that is something that is adding stress to anybody in our community, if you can get it to DPW, we'd be happy to take that in for the next few days. Those are the updates I have for this evening, and I appreciate all of your patience as we got through this budget process. It was obviously my first budget process with the organization, and in general, I just feel very fortunate to have the team that we have here and the relationship we have with all of you to work through that, so I want to thank you all for your time, energy, and effort put towards that. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Questions for Griffin? Okay, council member comments, Randy, let's start.
Can't pick anything, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. A couple of things, so Griffin already mentioned the Restorative Justice Conference agreement with the West Michigan Dispute Resolution Center. That was a very long meeting, you know, about three and a half hours, but we had very good discussion. Quite a few people were here from the neighborhood, from the Little League, very productive discussion, I think, so I think there were also some aha moments, where we were kind of realizing that there's organizations or individuals using the facilities who aren't necessarily associated with the Little League that's also contributing to some of the frustration among the neighbors, so that was kind of interesting when we were talking about schedules and who uses it and, you know, whose point use it and things like that, that there are some other uses going on, so I think we have an opportunity to perhaps address some of those things too in the process, but very good discussion, you can see the agreement here, there were lots of things, lots of ideas, lots of very low-cost or no-cost kinds of things, which is kind of what I was interested in, so what are some of those low-hanging group types of things that we could maybe put in place that might have some impact and, you know, help improve some satisfaction with the situation for people without maybe making any major, major drastic changes? So I think we came up with a few of those, so it was good. So I look forward to, you know, continuing to be part of that discussion. I've got a couple of takeaways here, as well as Griffin and Josh from Buskirk from the Little League, the neighbors have a couple of things. We talked a lot about communication, just how to, you know, keep the neighbors informed about what's going on there, how does the Little League communicate, you know, beyond kind of just the Little League community, you know, to the broader neighborhood and that sort of thing, so lots of really good discussion. So thank you again for the council sponsoring that activity, and I think it's been well worth the time and efforts so far. Other thing I wanted to mention was just a couple of updates from the Michigan Municipal League. Some of you know that I chaired the Municipal Services Committee, which, you know, they have different legislative committees that look at different bills that come up in the state legislature from a lobbying perspective. There's five or six different issue committees, and I happen to chair the Municipal Services Committee. We had a meeting the other day and just a couple of things that came up for discussion. There's a food truck uniform fire inspection bill. I know we do have some food trucks that come to the city occasionally, but that was discussion about fire inspection, kind of making that uniform across the board kind of for safety and how often and how much should they pay and that sort of thing for those inspections, who's doing those inspections. Some of that may fall on local fire inspectors and that sort of thing. There were three bills that came out of the Senate recently that have to do with the Open Meetings Act and making changes to that. One of them has to do with allowing video participation or remote participation to public meetings, both for elected or appointed officials as well as members of the public, and how that might be accommodated for those that may have physical or mental or disabilities or impairments, you know, either temporary or whatever. You know, for example, you have an elected or appointed official who has some kind of injury, you know, significant injury of some kind that prevents them from coming to a public meeting, would allow for some way for them to participate, deliberate, discuss, potentially even vote on matters remotely. So that was two, or one twenty-nine. We had some concerns about that, just from a practicality perspective as a committee if we were discussing it, as well as kind of, you know, who would be responsible for accommodating that with technology or varying the cost of being able to do some of that, as well as the potential for, you know, that to be abused or to be, you know, problematic as far as kind of just the integrity of the process a little bit, so we actually said we would oppose that particular bill. There's another one that talks about open meetings, but it has to do with just kind of more participating but not necessarily voting by remote means, and that maybe would only be for appointed officials, you know, like some are committees versus our elected officials, so there's that one. We didn't take a position on that one officially, but it had some questions that needed addressing. Then there's another one that has to do with open meetings related to closed session. That was Senate Bill two eighty-eight, what reasons you might be able to go in a closed session to discuss legal matters, including not just, you know, formal legal matters, but like kind of the thread of legal matters or potentially legal matters to kind of open it and make it a little bit more broad, and we had decided that we would be generally supportive of that idea. And then there's a couple of other bills, this is all coming out of the Senate, that have to do with the recreation passports, you know, you pay the fee for your license renewal. We're waiting to see kind of more about this, but we had some concerns because one of these wants to charge everybody regardless of whether you use the parks or don't use the parks, just add an extra fee to everybody's license renewal across the board instead of giving them the option to opt-in or opt-out. We had some concerns about that, you know, from a fairness standpoint, from a, you know, should people be able to opt-in or opt-out of paying that additional fee? So more to come on that, but just concerns that we took back to the bill sponsor there. So just a few things that are kind of interesting to share that have to do with some of our local government activities. And then there is an oath of office update, so we talked about this before. It looks like it's probably going to be the case that for our next city election, I would think, or the following, but I think it would apply this year is that, you know, new office holders wouldn't be able to take office until the first of the month following the election. You know, so office holders in Grandville, instead of taking office the week after the election, it would have to be after December first, which I think you kind of knew that was coming. Has to do with the certifying the election and making sure that everything is official before you can swear new office holders in. Then we talked about the public trust, public safety trust fund, that's still an idea that's out there with the state and then additional transportation funding, so just a couple of quick things there that are being discussed and I haven't seen that has some impact on local government. And of course, the revenue sharing trust fund is still out there to be discussed as well, like that was a carryover from kind of last session, so, anyway, just want to share. Thanks.
Justin?
Yeah, thank you, those were excellent updates, so really appreciate your service on that and the issues you brought back to us. Sounds like Councilmember Truist and I will have to wait another month for our time if that road goes through.
I think it's, I think it's pretty much a done deal.
Okay, all right. Very glad to hear about the Eagle permit, that's exciting, we've been waiting on this for a long time, so thank you for sharing that. Also on Indian Mountains Drive, I know that we've heard from residents before, I also myself and biking that it's just not a safe road to be on, people are constantly coming down the wrong way, it needs some help anyway as far as the road is concerned, so I'm in support of that and I'm glad that... so I'm in support of that and I'm glad that Downtown here, Inc. is going to fund the deal, so that's even better. I wanted to thank the mayor and all of those who participated for the second graders, my second grader really enjoyed being able to come and see City Hall and meet the mayor and tour the fire department and spend the day at the schoolhouse, which is an awesome thing that the Historical Commission does, so just a wonderful event for all of those kids, I'm very grateful for that. And then finally, I just wanted to, I know Jane already knows this, but hopefully you know my positions on things stem from, you know, a viewpoint on what I am believing is in the best interest of the residents, it is not to discount the tremendous work that you put into the budget, as indicated by my vote in support of the budget once my idea lost. I really do appreciate the work that you put in, all of the department heads put into our budget, the thoughtfulness given to the taxpayer dollars that we take, and as I said before, Charlie, your work in bringing us three different options to be able to consider, I know that that took some extra time to put together, so I'm sure Marcy was involved in that in some way as well because it involved resolution writing, so thank you to whoever played a role on that, very much appreciate it.
Thanks, Justin. Yeah? I appreciate Josh and Justin's comments, so I'll say I have nothing additional to add.
I have nothing to add, thanks.
Yeah, just a couple of things, this is not the farewell speech to our members who are not renewing their opportunity to serve on this board, but always appreciate Justin's thoughtful comments, and this is your last budget session, whether we agree or disagree or stand in alignment with you, you always put some very thoughtful time into this and I, I'm appreciative of that, so thank you for, for always giving what's best for, for everybody else, so thank you. My second comment, and it's more of a question too, and Griffin, maybe you can point me in the right direction, when residents say, hey, my neighbor's doing this and I don't like it, it used to be, call Matt, Matt's like, call Matt. We've engaged with PCI, do we have a contact or a way for us to direct people that have questions about problems in the city for code enforcement?
For right now, the best answer is still to call Matt.
One eight hundred.
Yes, we're thinking about a billboard, too. The goal is when we get PCI's feet more under them and they've gotten a little bit more caught up of, a little bit of the backlog we have on some of these items that vary similarly to their building inspection services, where we have like a business card that they can contact, that we would be able to do something very similar. Candidly, we're just not there yet, and Matt's experience with these types of challenges and, and our organization and community in general is helping us kind of weed through some of these items, there's a number that he can help resolve right away, as I know many of you are aware, it, it is quite common for the city to be contacted by someone, I don't like that my neighbor's doing X, Y, Z, and it, it very well may not be something that the city can be involved in at all. There are private property disputes and private property matters that happen all the time and, you know, they're not easy phone calls, and I, I know I really appreciate Matt taking the lead on a lot of those, he's really good at helping us kind of screen through some of those right now, and until we get PCI a little more up to speed, it's probably best to just continue with one eight hundred, call Matt.
I'm old enough to know that what the numbers mean, and I have, thank you for that.
No, but thank you, and again, in general, if there's ever doubt from somebody, we would so much rather have them reach out to our organization, if it's me, if it's the clerk's office, whoever it is, and we will get them where they need to go than have somebody go, I, I don't, I don't know if I should call, I don't know if I can call, you know, we can have those tough conversations about, you know, maybe that's not something we can help them with, but we would so much rather them call and see if we can try to support them.
Fair enough. That's it for me, thank you.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Justin's, uh, justice comments about the Restorative Justice Conference Agreement. I appreciate all the work and the time that you spent, I mean, I left after about three hours of the meeting, and I know you were there quite a long time, but, and I, I think you were the, just the perfect person to have there because you wear a number of hats, you're on the city council, you have a son who's in Little League, you're on Park and Rock End, so thank you, thanks for being willing to spend all that time, we, yeah, appreciate that very much. We also talked, I was going to talk about the grade event that Kyla and her group, Grandville Community Tree Project had, that was a lot of fun, we've talked a little bit about that already, also about all the cool second graders who were here, but I also, I wanted to let you know I had a new experience on Saturday, and that was, did you know that Grandville hosted a statewide karate tournament this past Saturday? Yes, and I was there and it was really, really interesting to go to a little bit of it, and I said, you know, welcome to Grandville, that kind of thing, but it was really, really cool, and I thought it was going to be like a lot of eight-year-olds, because I've been seeing eight, nine-year-olds for weeks, and no, it was like all ages, anywhere from eight years old to seventy, and the, the judges or the teachers, the sensei, I think is their name, were there, and I was, they were all dressed up in suit and pattern, anyway, it was just kind of a really cool, fun experience, so just had no idea we hosted a karate tournament, so, well, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Support.
And support. All right, all those in favor, please say yes, yes.
Yes.
In the opposite, please say no, but great, have a good evening, everybody, thanks.